Hey, good morning, or good morning, good, good evening.
Okay.
I have my phone in my pocket, so I can't pick it over. Okay. Yeah. 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 Okay. Yeah.[526.11]
Staff. Then there will be a presentation by the applicant and/or representatives. Commissioners may ask questions of the applicant. The chairperson will open the public hearing. The chairperson will call for public comments from persons in support of the items, followed by persons in opposition. The applicant will have the chance for rebuttal comments. The chairperson will close the public hearing. The commissioners may ask questions and will have discussion and take action. Speakers must speak from the podium and state their name and address for the record. The chairperson reserves the right to establish a timeline for all speakers to ensure that everyone can speak. And is three minutes a person enough? So that will be three minutes. The designation of a spokesperson for groups sharing a common point of view is encouraged. All comments and questions will be directed to the chair from the podium and not to the applicant, staff, or audience. When the hearing is closed, additional public comments are not permitted. We'll now have roll call.
Tyler Timbrig, Jeanette Johnson.
Here.
Terry Robinson.
Here.
Rosa Calasas.
Here.
Ken Corbett.
Here.
Chad Gerhardt.
Here.
Josh Greening. With five members present, there is a quorum.
Have there been any communications from the public to the staff?
I did get a couple of emails over the last couple of months from a couple of the neighbors just inquiring to find out on the status of updates and whether there was any information that was going to be posted for tonight's meeting. And I did let them know that I would pass that along once I had anything received. And I did send an email to two individuals with tonight's agenda and packet. And then I did also get an email this morning from a neighbor who wanted to voice her objection to the project, indicating that she couldn't be here tonight, but that she still opposes the project. And also wanted to indicate that there had been a party at the property over the weekend and it had gone to late hours and was very noisy once again. And so just expressed concern over the continued use of the property.
Okay, is there any conflict of interest by members of the commission? Or have there been any ex parte communications? Okay. The record will show that there has not been. So we will call for the zoning and subdivision items. The continuance by the planning commission on June 10th, 2024. CU 24 slash oh four. No. Turbu B R T S. I'm sure, I wasn't here then, so I'm terrible at your name, I'm sure. Requesting a congressional use permit to establish a rodeo event venue on properties zoned RA1 Rural Agriculture District and located at 6320 Southeast 45th Street in Tecumseh.
Okay.
Joni.
All right, so first things first, I did mention this ahead of times, but our microphones do amplify, so make sure to speak into those microphones. That's an update from the last time that this project was up in front of us before. Also to ensure that the live stream picks up on all of your voices so that during the project, a live stream that they can hear from their homes. As Jeanette mentioned, this is a continuation of the hearing that was held on June 10. A background of the proposal, it was originally here in June. We sent, from the planning commission, we sent out 28 letters to property owners within 1,000 feet of this property. We did, prior to that public hearing, receive a great deal of emails in opposition to the project. We did receive two emails at that time in support of the project. We had the public hearing and 32 people showed up and spoke in opposition. The applicant was here with his consultant and introduced and answered questions in regards to the project. The property has historically been used for agricultural purposes. It is near Shawnee Heights Middle School and High School, near a residential neighborhood, and located off of Southeast 45th Street, just to the east of the four-way stop located at that location. To the east side, you'll find a great deal of agricultural land. And to the north is agricultural land as well. And then a little bit further north, you'll find residential area. In my report at that time, I identified a list of concerns in regards to the proposal that I felt like needed to be addressed to help answer some questions and address concerns of the neighbors and of staff. At the time, I found that the request did not satisfy the golden factors and I recommended that the planning commission take one of two actions. And that was either to deny the project or continue it to a later date. After hearing and comments and questions, the planning commission did in fact make a motion and approve a continuance and scheduled that to come back to you in August. At that time, there were also some comments that were made about the North Topeka Saddle Club and I wanted to, you know, include that into my report tonight because there are similarities between the two projects and that did come up. But after the vote continuing to August, the applicant did reach out and request some additional time. They made that request back in July and so we set it for tonight's meeting. At that time, because we had publicly announced when the meeting and the hearing was going to be continued, we did have to take some additional steps to ensure that the neighbors were informed about what was happening. We sent emails to all of the neighbors who had directly contacted us. So anybody who had contacted me or the planning at sncu.us email address in regards to this proposal, we sent them an email notifying them that we were continuing it until this September date. We also sent new letters to everybody that was on the list of neighbors within 1,000 feet. And then we sent letters to anybody who was here or emails to anybody that was here the night of the meeting who had their address written down on our notification list so that they were aware. We published new legal notice in the paper on August 19, 2024, that the meeting would be held tonight. We posted on our banner on our website, the page, that it was going to be continued until tonight. And then we made an announcement at the August meeting, as well as had it on the August agenda that it had been continued. And I state all of this just to ensure that the public understands that we went to a great deal of effort to notify everybody that this matter was going to be continued until tonight. On August 15, a traffic study analysis was received in the planning department. And I, on that day, forwarded it over to the public works department so that they could review it. And they did come back with some questions and concerns about the comments that were made within the traffic study. My understanding is that those questions and concerns have been forwarded on to the consultant who did the traffic study and that response on that has not been received back yet. I did remain in email and phone communication with the applicant's consultant during this time. I gave them a hard deadline of August 23 to send me updated information. That was about two weeks prior to tonight's meeting. The reason for a hard deadline was that it takes me some time to create and write a new staff report and I needed to be able to assess the information that I received and take that into consideration as I was writing the staff report. We also plan and send that information to all of our reviewing entities. That could be public works, environmental health, emergency management, fire departments, various entities that need to give input on a project such as this. I did not receive any additional information prior to August 23. So the staff report that I wrote was based on the information that I had at that time. My understanding is that the applicant tonight has some updated information to present to you, but I want you to understand that I have not seen that and I don't know what those updates are and I have not taken that into consideration in regards to my report and my recommendations. For your recollection, here is the property identified in red. As you can see, Southeast 45th lines the south side of it. As mentioned, there's the residential neighborhood to the west and the school you can see there as well. And then you can see and identify all the agricultural land that surrounds the property as well. The zoning in this area for this property and everything, pretty much to the north and to the west, is RA1 or Rural Agriculture District. The area to the west is Residential Rural or RR1. This is the map of the 1,000-foot property notification. And then the site plan that was originally submitted with the packet back several months ago in April. Looking directly to my staff report updates, I wanted to point out a couple of items. If you recall, when the planning commission hears a conditional use permit or hears a zoning matter, you are looking at changing the zoning, in essence, of the property, which can affect those surrounding. And so your best bet in considering a case that involves zoning is to utilize Golden versus Overland Park, which is case law from back in the 70s that set out eight factors for reasonable consideration of a zoning case. My staff report identifies that it's not necessary for you to find each of those eight factors. You don't have to find a certain way on each of those factors. They're just the things that you have to look at and consider when you're looking at one of these cases. It could be that one factor in and of itself really hits hard on a case and outweighs the remainder. And it could be that that one factor makes a proposal get denied or get approved. It could go either way, so long as you're looking at those eight factors. And to be fair, you can also look at other things. You don't have to limit yourself to those eight factors. Each case should be taken on a case-by-case basis, looking at the circumstances of that particular case. In this case, in my updated staff report, I tried to identify by underlining words where I was looking at specific golden factors, such as the character of the neighborhood, zoning uses of nearby properties, whether or not the property is suitable under the restrictions it's been given, whether it could detrimentally affect those in the surrounding community, and availability of public services. As I went through all of these factors, what I found was it's my recommendation and determination that this project does not meet those factors at this time. I feel like this is detrimental to the neighborhood, to the extent that they were not able to respond and answer. A lot of the items that I asked for in my original staff report could have addressed a number of those topics. I think that it's possible to overcome some of these factors and to be able to present a proposal that could have been met, but in this circumstance, it was not because the information wasn't provided to me and I don't feel comfortable or confident moving forward with this proposal and having it be able to not detrimentally affect the neighborhood. I believe that it is an improper use of zoning the way that it sits right now. I'm concerned about the availability of public services, the water, the toilets and the bathrooms, how we're going to make sure that the animals are cared for and their waste is disposed of. I'm concerned with the noise. I'm concerned with the amount of traffic that's going to be driving up and down Southeast 45th Street. I'm concerned about the dust that will be raised with this ground to the neighbors with the animals moving around and the amount of people. I'm concerned about how parking will be handled and whether or not overnight camping would occur or how late people would stay at the property. I think that all of those items listed out in the original staff report need to be answered before a recommendation of approval could be made. And I just don't have the ability to make any other recommendation at this point, other than to recommend denial.
Are you ready for questions?
Yes, I'm ready for questions. That's the end of my specific report.
So do the commissioners have any questions of staff? Well, I have one.
Okay.
Was one of the questions you sent back about the traffic report?
Correct. We were aware that they had already gone down the path of getting a traffic report prior to the last meeting and they didn't have that accomplished. It just wasn't, there wasn't enough time. We did receive that report back and it was a part of your packet.
Yes.
Today. I would say that the biggest concern and the questions in regards to this report have to do with the stopping distance, traveling down 45th Street. According to the traffic study, they indicated that a westbound driver may not have sufficient sight distance to make a safe stopping maneuver in the event that there was a vehicle stopped in the roadway near the proposed entrance. And that is a safety factor that at this point has not been able to become, to overcome. I don't have a solution to how we would provide a better saving, stopping distance, safe stopping distance from that.
Do you think that they took into consideration the closure of Highway 40 and how that has cut down on the traffic on 45th Street now?
I am aware that they made, so they did their traffic spot study June 18th, between 10:18 a.m. and 12:08 p.m. And my understanding, just from my own personal recollection, would be that Highway 40, 45th Street further down would have been closed. I don't know whether or not they took that into consideration. That wasn't identified within the report.
Is there any other questions? Seeing none, we're ready for the presentation by the applicant.
Good evening. Joshua Blinsky with SBB Engineering. Just wanted to say a few words to speak to what Joni was talking about. We understand that there's a lot of information that is still required to be submitted and we apologize for not getting that in time. We do have a number of traffic comments that we have to the third-party engineer and they're trying to address those at this point. We expect to get those in the next couple of weeks. Joni, a minor point on that. I spoke with the traffic engineer.
Trying to speak up.
Is it working?
It's underlying that we're not hearing. Yeah.
Okay, apologies for that. I spoke to the traffic engineer about that sight distance issue and they believe that it can be remedied by moving the entrance slightly to the east because there's that small hill there that the cemetery entrance is placed directly on. So by shifting that driveway slightly to the east, we can overcome that sight distance issue. As far as I know, we have to get the complete results back from them. We do have the stormwater report completed. We had not submitted that because we were still waiting back for traffic comments. And we do have the majority of the, I think it was 30-plus comments that was provided to us last time. We also did not submit those since we were waiting on the full package. We thought it a disservice not to get everything in at once, so you'd have everything to consider. So at this point, we'd just like to provide a little more information, a progress report, if you would like to call it that, to show you that we are working on all of those comments. And Noel here is to, is ready to do that, if you can bring up his presentation.
Okay, well, first of all, I want to thank everybody for being here. Thank you. I want to start off by just kind of rehashing some of the stuff we talked about last week. But first of all, thanking everybody and again for giving me the opportunity to hear my case again. That includes to the commission, as well as to the public and the neighbors. But like Josh said, we have been working to get you guys the complete information. I know it doesn't help anybody to have reviewing complete information. So this is just a slideshow of kind of what we have been doing and some of the things that address some of the concerns expressed last time we met. So I'll just get started and once I'm done, or feel free to jump in if you guys have any questions. Whoops. Okay, so last time we talked about, you know, I hadn't spoken to a lot of the neighbors, but just a little bit of what my intention is with my project. Basically, you know, to grow the sport of rodeo, positively impact our community and, you know, basically provide an exceptional experience to, you know, our neighbors, Patreons and sponsors. Experience. So there are a few members of our group that, including myself, that have, you know, prior experience with rodeos. Like they say, this is our first rodeo, so we do come with that experience. We're currently, you know, working with other organizations in-state or out-of-state to, you know, help us provide those accolades or testimonials to, you know, help you guys make your determination a lot easier. Track record, I mean, you know, we work with a lot of people that come in from out-of-state. They trust, you know, the work and organization that we bring to the table. So that's just for you guys to know that we're not just, you know, bringing anyone on-site to, you know, host a rodeo and hope for the best. And here's just one quick testimonial from one of the people that we have worked with in the past. His name's Michael Swift. He's the president of the Flint Hills Rodeo in Strong City. That is a really big facility out there. And in the previous years, we've rented out their facility for our rodeos. And all they do is provide the facility, but we coordinate everything. We bring in all the services. And to Mike's comments, you know, everything has been conducted in an orderly fashion and the facility has been left as it was received. So just kind of wanted to share a little bit with the group so they understand that, you know, we do have some experience in the field of rodeos. As you guys, last time we talked about, you know, the frequency of events for rodeos. We were thinking four per year. But as you guys know, a lot of this will kind of be determined based off, you know, interest in the community, but we want to start off with four. I don't foresee it going more than that, but, you know, we might be here today talking about how much I want to do rodeos. And to my surprise, the first one, I don't think that, you know, the interest is there. So, you know, why pursue it further? The timing, again, mainly through the summer months, April through September, is kind of that time range where I would think it'd be more appropriate to have those rodeos. And obviously, they would be on weekends. We'd have vendors and guests all arriving after 4:00 p.m. The event hours that we're proposing to the committees between 4:00 and 11:00. And the guest's amount, quantity is 400 people. Joni, you mentioned the Saddle Club with, you know, they have quite a few people when they, their events. And, you know, our property's a lot larger than the Saddle Club, so it can accommodate the 400 guests. One of your concerns, Joni, was overnight camping. That will not be allowed at our property. And then the parking is on-site, so the public would not be hindered with people parking out in the street or near properties. Traffic and access management, as it was expressed earlier, we're still working through some of the details and some of the comments that came back. We're working diligently to make sure where those questions or comments are being addressed properly. So if given the opportunity to continue working on this, I would provide further details. And then Josh, you addressed the drainage plan. I know there was a few comments that still also needed to be addressed, but I just wanted to give you guys a high-view conclusion of some of the findings. Basically, drainage pattern remains unchanged based off the current conditions of the facility. We wouldn't have, you know, any other areas that would be affected because a lot of what is on-site reflects our final plan. I know one big concern about the rodeos was having the noise throughout the event and how we would manage that. On your screen, there's a graph of basically where the activities would be. The circle represents the area of focus. But as you guys can see, this chart here, or the scale, basically represents the decibels, which is how you measure sound. With red obviously being the highest at 90, that's how it was gauged. And just so you guys know, concert are between 90 and 110 decibels. So we are basically, the red area is the loudest area. And then as you guys can see, our nearest neighbor to the east is in that green area, which you would have decibels of, you know, between 57 and 46 decibels. And then just to give you guys an example of what 46 decibels are. I mean, traffic is basically, the noise of traffic on the main road is kind of reflective of how you would hear it from the farthest east. And then there's another building here that basically is nearest to the facility to the east. As you can see, that is sound, I mean, it's hardly getting to the.
Who put that together for you?
That was done by our consultants for noise. It's engineering for Matta, Kansas City, I believe. So that is the existing condition, right? So one thing that we proposed was basically providing the fencing with sound attenuation coverage. So the intent is that if it was to move forward, as we progress through our business plan, we would like to implement fencing in these strategic areas to help reduce the ordinance to the nearest neighbor on the west. And as you can see at this area here with some of the fencing, some of the fencing, it's purple, which is 35 decibels, which at that point, you know, it's not as loud as you would imagine the facility. Yes, sir.
Thank you for coming here. I've got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
You say you're going to have four events a year.
Mm-hmm.
And that's it.
Yes, four rodeos.
Well, I can't figure out by asking you this, if you're going to have the expenses of putting this together, how are you going to survive on four events on a 12-month, with your bills and your insurance, your taxes?
So a lot of this is not, to me, a lot of this is not about money. I can, some of the events have proven to be financially sustainable. Right now, I mean, in the past, we've done three or four events in other facilities, like the one in Flint Hills. And with those events, we have been able to sustain our expenses. One thing, like you mentioned, was the insurance. Typically, that's high dollar, right? When you host rodeos, you pay per occurrence policies. So those don't go like your typical homeowner's insurance from, you know, one point in the year to the other. These are per. These are per occurrence.
But you'll still need insurance every day of the year for, if you're running, we have the public coming in, you'll still need insurance of some kind.
Yes, so the only time I would have open, you know, the facility for the public would be at these rodeos, right? Because that's when I would be doing the marketing, that's when I would be doing advertisement. That's when, that's the only time that the facility would be open to the public.
So there'd be no livestock there, only for those four days or four events?
Correct. Yeah, right now, I think I have maybe two cows on site, but as you guys know, rodeo livestock is high dollar animals and a lot of our partners that bring in their livestock will bring it that day and take it home or back to their facility that same day.
And my last question, you say everything is done at 11 o'clock?
Yes, that is the intent to have the music wrapped up by that time or the event.
But when you say 11 o'clock, the music shuts off, you still have to get 400 people off your property?
Yes, sir.
So it could be two hours?
No, so what we have done in the past to push, you know, the public out is typically, we have our security company, third-party company assist us to get people out there in an orderly fashion and as soon as, you know, the event's over.
I'm looking for you to do it. I just don't want you to get in a situation where you take a big hit and you may not be able to come back on it, so that's all I'm talking about.
No, I appreciate your concern. A lot of this has, you know, we've been, put a lot of thought into it and, you know, a lot of this is also passion for this sport. We enjoy, you know, having the rodeos and continue to keep that culture alive, you know, with how things now are progressing as far as modernization. So, any questions?
Yeah, I have.
Yes, sir.
I have a couple of questions. The concerns that have been brought are, there's two things that I think need to be addressed for our understanding. One is night lighting. And the other is, the other concern is dust. So I would have questions for you about your parking and the area around the facility where you're actually going to be doing the rodeos. And then just a note to everyone here, as I look at the overall placement of your facility, it is close to an athletic facility where there's a ball field where I'm sure there is absolutely noise coming off a PA system and lighting. And in all fairness, I believe that you would need to be as, be no more nuisance than that sports facility.
Yep, I understand your point. As you mentioned, there's a facility west of the proposed area and we, you know, from when we're out there at night, we can see the lights from there and obviously, we knew they were there when we bought the property, so we're not, we're not complaining about it. And what we would do is, so the lighting that we propose in our plan would only be utilized those days and would only be utilized from dusk to basically the end of the event, which at this point, you know, during the summer hours, you have those longer days and it's not dark till eight, nine o'clock. And from, let's just say, early, worst-case scenario, from seven to 11 is when that light, the lights could potentially be on.
And then could you address the dust, please?
Yes, sir, so-
Some of these roads here, we propose using gravel rock to help, you know, minimize the dust instead of just using the land that would create more dust than necessary. But given our study for our drainage report, also included some information as far as that, given the number of events per year, it would basically allow for the vegetation to grow back up and help prevent the dust from coming up if we were able to just, you know, drive over what's there now.
So your parking area would be vegetation?
Yeah, I mean, it's currently, right now, it's just grass or some dirt, but that's what it currently is at the moment.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
This may be for Joni or for you, but I'm looking here on page two and the concerns of staff and reviewing agencies and it goes, it's almost a page and a half of things that they're asking about. And I don't know whether you could, if you comply with all these, I don't know how you could be in business.
So I'm basically not to skip over your question, I just, I think it's the same to the next slide, if I may.
Okay, go ahead.
So just so everybody sees, this is like basically the conclusion from that noise analysis.
So as you guys can see, I mentioned that 90 decibel, which is concert kind of loudness. And then basically, if we were to take into consideration some of the decibels that are required for like an outdoor activity plus some of the barriers, these are kind of the decibels, noise decibels that our neighbors, our closest neighbors would encounter if we put a barrier and if we also just, you know, position-
Looking at that, who are the neighbors or where are the, what is the sound gonna be north for those property behind you?
So to the north of us is just agricultural.
So there's no homes back there?
No, there's livestock and to the east, there's livestock. And then to your question, sir, as you mentioned, security and safety, I believe.
But what I'm looking at here, that I'm reading, you know, is portable hand washing stations, how many Johnny on the job for people? And it just goes one after, one after another of things. And I don't know whether you have to address them, I don't know, but-
Yes, sir. So if you would allow me to just kind of go through the presentation and then if there's a few other questions, then I'd be happy to answer them. So I know a big concern here is security and safety for the public, also just the participants, but currently, we would have just specifically 10 security guards. These are from a third-party company and this 10, this number 10 came from, straight from the third-party to ask for recommendations as far as, you know, what they thought we would need for an event. Obviously, the 10 security people will be supported by rodeo staff, so it's not just 10 people out there trying to manage the whole event.
Are you talking to your mic?
Oh, sorry. And then as far as safety for guests and vehicle check-in, this is what we have done in the past, but basically, we have vehicle inspections and pat downs prior to, we inspect the vehicle, once it makes it into the property at the entry, and then we do pat downs and metal detector wands, once they're gonna enter the event. And then training of staff conducting checks. I mean, the staff that's really getting to, you know, checking the vehicles and patting people down is our third-party security company that we'd hire. And then re-entry policy, obviously, it's a concern as far as people coming in and leaving and potentially coming back with a weapon or something that's not allowed on the facility or at the event. Basically, we'd limit the re-entry to one time. After that, they won't be able to come in and we would have, what we have done in the past, we give bracelets for each event. They're all different colors, so that basically indicates who has been checked at the entry and it also allows us for that one re-entry. Emergency response, we did consult with AMR. They are available to be onsite throughout the event. Obviously, that is what we would expect to do because that's what we have done in the past as well. And then the site plan has the roads where we want to basically include specifically for AMR or any emergency vehicle. It basically comes in at the entry and loops around the property into where the event would be hosted. Communication system, obviously, there's a lot of pre-planning that goes into this before the event, months and months before, you know, the first initial event. Once the, you know, we start the season, we will have meetings between the events if allowed and then obviously, we maintain communication via radios. You mentioned lighting, basically, it's the portable lighting structures pointed strategically areas, including parking. Basically, we want to make sure the area is well eliminated to avoid any safety concerns. Signage, we would have signage strategically placed, you know, at entry points, parking areas, food areas, restrooms. So all those areas are identified on the site plan that you guys, actually that I have on the presentation and we can look at that at the end of the PowerPoint.
You also mentioned risk management as far as insurances and how we would, you know, pay for all that. Like I mentioned, special insurance policies are purchased per event, so there wouldn't be any need for-
There wouldn't be any need for, you know, rodeo insurance to be placed throughout the year because it's, the way that they handle it is per event. And then obviously, and then covers the event plus attendees, so the guests are covered as part of the policy. And then obviously, once we get into our staff, like the rodeo personnel and the actual people riding the bulls and horses, we do have a template for a waiver. Sanitation and waste management, so we did speak to the sanitation company there, I believe, and also I think, Joni, there was some recommendations from you guys as far as what you guys expected for restrooms. Correct me if I'm wrong, if I am, apologize, just kind of-
From environmental, environmental health makes those recommendations based on the number of people correct them.
So seven portable toilets, those would be basically your Johnny-on-the-spots. They're not gonna be permanent, so once the event's over, they're basically picked up the next day. And then two-hand washing stations, the washing stations basically, basically like you said, just maintaining that sanitation through the event. Two-hand stations were recommended from our sanitation company. And typically throughout the event, we have, you know, people checking the restrooms for, making sure they stay clean or there's, you know, toiletries within those. Trash cans will be placed throughout the property for, so we, you know, maintain the property clean. You know, we want to make sure that our property stays clean because it also represents us. We would have a roll-off dumpster brought in a day or two before the event, just so that we can accumulate all the trash from the event, be rolled off, you know, the first business day after the event. Drinking water and food vendors, so at these events, we typically have water for sale, bottled water for guests. There are, and then the food will be catered from a different food trucks. We want to make sure that those food trucks meet all the regulations and, you know, they are responsible ultimately for selling their, the food, you know, based off all the regulations and stipulations that Kansas requires all the food trucks to meet. Alcohol management, so we don't plan on selling any strong spirits at the property. It'll just be beer. You know, as prior experiences, that helps mitigate some of the issues that may be brought by alcohol consumption. So we'd be only selling beer, obviously, if the license was granted. Sales would start at four and we would also want to terminate any beer or alcohol sales 45 minutes prior to the event ending, so it gives people time to, you know, relax and not continue consuming alcohol to the time that they gotta leave. We also do ID checks, you know, we have dedicated stations at the alcohol consumption purchasing points to make sure that we're not selling alcohol to underage people. We did do some research, the Kansas Department of Revenue does offer some training for our staff to be informed as far as what is accepted and things to look for when people are trying to purchase drinks that are not supposed to. And then some of the things that we would do to identify drink, people of age would be, you know, providing risk bans for alcohol consumption. In prior experience, we've seen that work fairly well. You know, even here in Topeka, we had the carnivals and stuff and sometimes they offer those bans to identify people that have been vetted. And like I mentioned, a lot of the alcohol sales, we'd make sure that all over, people at the points of sales are well-trained to make, you know, those sales. We would not allow any alcohol from the exterior, so that is one thing that we're looking for at the, you know, at the vehicle inspections for no alcohol, no bottles, something that can be used as an obstacle or- Animal containment, so given that the animals are gonna be, the livestock will be brought in that same day and will be removed from the facility that same day, we don't foresee having a large amount of animal feces. So if there's anything, the property's large enough that it can be spread and, you know, ultimately used as a natural fertilizer. I mean, our neighbors to the north and the east have, you know, cattle all year around and it's never been an issue. As far as animal containment, we have steel pins in place. These are at least seven foot tall. They're not mobile ones that, you know, an animal could lean up against and move it. These are, you know, in-the-ground concrete poured around them to make sure that they're safe for everybody. And then the water for the animals, I think that was one concern being during the summer, we would just place troffers throughout the areas where we would have the animals. I mean, these are, you know, 100-gallon troffers that you place. I'm sure some of you guys are well-versed with, you know, cattle and know where I'm coming from with that. Post-event cleanup, you know, we'd have trash pickup at the event and post the event. And we would also have our personnel, you know, walk the front edge of the property and even, you know, a couple hundred feet past it, just to make sure that we're keeping the area clean. We're really proud of the area that we have and we want to keep it clean, so. And I know we owe that to the public as well. Just a couple of things that I would like to, you know, accomplish with my rodeo events. You know, like I mentioned, boost local economy. I mean, you draw, you know, people to the area from near places and you're also helping some of the food vendors come and sell some of their products. And ultimately, you know, those people also have families to support and I think that would help, that'd be a positive for the local economy. local economy. And then, support local vendors, like I mentioned, there's a lot of small businesses that typically like to attend these, you know, to, to help support their families. And then, as far as job creation, obviously, a lot of the people that are gonna staff this event are gonna be paid, so. And like I mentioned, tourism, I mean, it just attract, you know, people from surrounding areas to, to the event. Community-wise, I mean, I, what I would like to do is, you know, have the rodeos and bring, you know, together some of the community, I know, you know, being out there on Tecumseh, a lot of people grew up around that stuff, so, I'd like to, you know, with having those, have the people come out and have a good time, and, you know, it helps preserve, preserve And obviously, we want to, you know, support some of the local charities, not sure, you know, obviously, what that would look like, but, you know, if, if allowed, you know, we'd like to open up the area, the place for maybe, you know, a fundraiser or a charity for the high school, if they ever have something that they would wanna do, or the local church, you know, given that it would, at that point, it would be a public place. One, one-to-three-year plan, obviously, like I mentioned before, I wanna host the initial event and just kinda gauge the community interest from there. And then, just continue establishing our brand and, you know, continue growing our credibility. And then, as far as local partnerships, you know, continue, bring in local businesses and sponsors. And then, I know, I'm a firm believer, you know, education's big for me, came from a family that, you know, didn't have a whole lot, but I think everybody deserves opportunity to, an education, and, you know, we would also like to help fund some of those support Here's the site plan that I mentioned earlier, I guess I can't walk over there, but, this has basically all the, the areas that I discussed during my presentation today, the green is our parking lot. This is the proposed entry that we would have, if given the opportunity to open this facility. As you can see at the lower bottom of the page, excuse me, there's two dots next to each other that represents, or that's where the entry would be, the red dots represent trash cans, but, just wanted to show you guys where the entry would be, but, we would make our gate basically into the property, so, once cars are coming in, they're not waiting out in the road, there's space in the property to basically have them wait while they're being checked and not out in the road. Up on the north area, you have the pen and the staging areas, well as the, the seating, you can, the graded shaded areas that look like roads, those are basically how we could get the traffic in, the, the loop on the, on the, my left side or right side is basically where we would establish that road for emergency vehicles and AMR, that, you know, they could basically not go through the traffic of, you know, the people and every, all the setup, they could just loop around and exit the, the facility. There's light towers identified here, some of these are already on-site, but they're just like pole lights that we have for our use, but we would add some, some li, uh, towers or lighting for, for the event specifically that would be temporary for each event. You can see the cattle pen area up on the far north area, that's where we'd have all of our livestock, and there's also fencing that basically encloses that area. And then, we would have our roll-off dumpster over here on the west side of, or the east side of the fence where they create separation between that road, so, this is where we have a roll-off dumpster that would be removed the next business day after the event. And then, over here, you have all your vendors located here, and again, more trash cans for disposal. That's all I had. Joni, I'll be, I'll send you this, I just, I went, wanted to go over this with you guys just so that you guys know that we have been working on this diligently, we don't wanna just send you guys, you know, partial information, so, there are a few things that still need to be concluded, but we're working through those.
Are there other questions from the commissioners?
I have a couple.
So, on your, on your area from front to back, what, what water, real water would be providing you water?
Yes, so, I don't have that here, sorry, I'm a hands-on...
But you, you've got a meter and you've got water.
Yes, sir, we have a meter and we have different hydrants throughout the facility now.
And, and when, when your finger's done, that area up around the top would seat four hundred people around the rodeo area?
Yeah, so, the intent is to have bleacher seating?
Yeah. Thanks.
When you say three or four weekends, are you talking about one night on the weekend, or are you talking about two, maybe three week, uh, weekend nights?
The facility would, would only be open one day to the public for one, per weekend.
Are there any other questions? All right, thank you very much for your...
Thank you, everybody, appreciate your time.
...update and presentations, and I guess we will open to the public, for the public hearing now, so, if there's anyone that wants to speak in favor, we'll take the proponents first, and remember that there's a place to sign in your name and address, and then speak from the podium, please.
I would also like to notate that this is only for comments outside of what have already been made the last time you were here, don't repeat the same thing if there's anything new or in addition.
Or someone that wasn't here before?
Correct.
So, did you say four?
Four.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Carolina Terbiartis, Noe's sister, so, I didn't get to speak last time, but I did wanna take a moment to introduce myself and also, obviously, speak in favor of, like my brother said, this is more than anything, it's a passion project for us, we've grown up around horses our entire life, and this is just something that's always, like, held our family together, excuse me, I get a little nervous. And yeah, so, I think also the basis of this idea is to provide a cornerstone for the community to, outside of rodeos, to have a place to hold charitable events, and we've actually done some charitable events in the past, and we would like to open that to the community, to everyone in the surrounding area, so, I think that would really be a huge benefit for the community, and also, you know, help us get to know each other better and lend a hand to one another and be there for each other in case anybody ever needs anything, so, I think that's pretty much the gist of what I wanted to say, thank you.
Is there anyone else? Then, we will hear now from any people in opposition.
across the street from the proposed area. One thing we've heard is how this affects the, the ground to the, to the north, to the east, well, I live directly south, and it does affect my property and my home as well. As stated earlier, there was a function Saturday night, and it was pretty contained until about a quarter till nine, the noise then, and I don't, I don't hear the music, all I hear is the bass, the boom, 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 constantly. Finally, at eleven o'clock, I went to bed, turned the TV on, turned it up so I could go to sleep. So, I understand that, you know, you can have events over there at this point in time, and, but, noise abatement, for me, is one of the major problems. Also, they showed on the road study, moving the, the entrance to the east, I come from the west occasionally to turn in a driveway which will be less than a hundred feet from, across the road, I have to come to a full and complete stop because I can't see over that crest of the hill. So, moving it east will create more of a problem, in my opinion, it, you come up, it crests, and then it drops down pretty rapidly, that is an accident waiting to happen. My major concern is, is health and safety. I spent twenty-nine years working on the fire department, I understand what can and will happen. With AMR on scene, that will assist, what happens when somebody gets hurt after taking them to the hospital, do we get another unit in there? I've been to a rodeo or two, and I've seen people get hurt at rodeos, and it, it can happen the next rider. It would've been very nice if we could've had the information that was proposed here tonight ahead of time, so that we could look it over as residents of the area. It appears that it was two weeks late, so, none of us in the thousand-foot area had the opportunity to look at this information prior to tonight. I did give my testimony two months ago, and some of you have that, some of you don't. If any of you would like a copy of my previous testimony, I would be willing to furnish it.
Thank you.
Can you send me that via email, or do you have a copy of it?
I have a copy.
Yeah, if you can, I'm sure I have it in my pile, but we wanna make sure, since, make sure that we have it.
Yeah, I wasn't here, so, that'd be great, thank you.
I do have a comment to one of his...
No, no responses right now, you'll have an opportunity to reply later.
There'll be a point.
Hi, I'm Sharon Lee Meyer, I'm about, let's see, three houses down, same side of the road, and, first of all, oh, I'm sorry, sixty-two-twenty-two, the last time you were here, you, you introduced yourself, you guys seem like such nice people, I, I would welcome you to the neighborhood, you and your family, for school, for events, for whatever, to live there, I, we would welcome you. I don't like the noise, I don't, I'm a retired person and my husband is, we go to bed semi-early, so, I realize this has been talked about before, but, at some point, somebody could live in my house that has children, and it is true, I don't, I, I don't know anything about the sound thing that you said, I don't, but I do know what I can hear inside my house with the air conditioner going and the windows closed, I, I do know. So, yeah, it impacts me and I get a little tired of it, but, if somebody has small children, it is a problem, it really is, and it's something that you should address, you should address. The other thing I wanted to mention, and I, this is my ignorance, and I realize it, to my knowledge, you've had two events this summer since you, you know, came and presented before, it, they could be family parties, I don't know, I don't know what they are, I don't really understand it, I do know that you have a lot of people there, so, a lot of the conditions and the things that you're addressing tonight are concerns for those times as well, not just for the four times for this possible rodeo, you know, lots of people, there's fifty and sixty cars, there's, you know, there's the possibility of a lot of stuff, I don't know if you serve liquor, but I think there, I know there's liquor drunk, I don't know what kind of control you have after that, so, I'm not sure where the role for you guys stops and starts for these other events, so, I guess my question to you is, you're, you're presenting the rodeo, and it sounds cool, it really does, but, what else are you gonna have, I mean, if you have four events a year, what else are you going to have? Are you gonna have, I don't know, once a week, once every two weeks, and do you have this stuff set up for those events as well? So, that's one question I have for you. The other thing is, what recourse as neighbors do we have, and this is my ignorance, if his passes and, you know, like, the sound study and stuff like that, but, it's just not followed, what recourse do we have as neighbors, because right now, I'm understanding that there's nothing we can do if it's too loud, so, is there, is there a recourse, or... And is that a question I can ask?
Is that time?
Maybe that's something I can't ask, I'm, I'm just...
We're not answering questions right now, if it's something that's, it's brought up, then we can respond to that.
And your, your three minutes are up, thank you.
And that, that's it, so.
All right.
Sorry, I, I didn't...
If there's any other presentations, if you'd please address the commission and not the audience, we'd appreciate that.
Good evening, my name's Jill Siya Jackson, I live at sixty-two-twenty-one Southeast Forty-Fourth Street, if you look at that map, I'm, so, I'm here on behalf of myself and two other households, the other two households were not able to be here, I just wanna address a couple of things, I, I spoke last time, and I wanted to address a couple of things that were brought up, it keeps being brought up that the high school is right there, and we can hear the high school noise, there are very few high school games, and at best, I can hear maybe three... There are very few high school games, and at best, I can hear maybe three of them. And all of those games are done by ten. And the property is cleared out quickly. There's not much noise out of it from there. Saturday night, I had the TV on, watching the football game with the volume up, three-quarters of the way up. I know it's anecdotal, but I could still hear the bass. And it didn't, didn't stop until, I don't know, I went to bed at eleven-thirty at night, and I could still hear it going. So um that's the big thing. For myself and my neighbors. Yeah. So um, yeah, that's, that's pretty much all I wanted to add. I just wanted to clarify that. The high school, whenever I bought my house, the high school was a purchase point. I'm right next to a middle school, I'm right next to a high school, great resale, it's a quiet area. I would rethink that purchase if if things were to continue on. So just want to, thank you.
If there's someone else planning on speaking, you can head up that way.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Dennis Lemunyan. I live at forty-three zero one Southeast Heathcliff Drive, outside the zone. Although I can agree with the other comments. Not only being in the house, but listening to my music in my shop and the beat. So I have a couple of questions that I have a hard time understanding the process of these studies. When the mu, when the sound study was performed, was the music actually being played through the sound system that's going to be used? We could hear sound checks in the afternoon pretty clearly. I don't understand the decibel going to the east when we are quite a ways to the west and how that study was actually performed. I also question the study of traffic. It was done during a real downtime of when traffic actually flows up and down Forty-Fifth Street. You know, now school is in, there's a lot more buses, there's a lot more traffic, and kids going to school. They go up and down Forty-Fifth. And during the other time, it was probably a lot of the trucks that come from the rock quarry that fly through there. That's another concern. You got big trucks hauling ass through there, going way over the speed limit because it's forty-five in that area. And then it goes down to thirty towards the west, and that's another concern during some of the peak out times in which some of these events may be starting because you've got a lot of big equipment running through there. So I just wanted to question how those two studies were done. And just my concern of, I'm not sure they were quite reasonable for what reality is. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that's planning to speak? If there are no other persons which would like to speak against this, then we'll take time for the applicant to have rebuttal time if you'd like to answer any of those questions.
Joshua Blinsky again. Couple of quick points on the studies question. The studies are performed when the event is supposed to occur, which would be a Saturday. So they set up traffic cameras, cameras for the weekend event, so you would not have seen them during the week when um school buses and things like that are to be around. So that traffic is not going to be occurring at that point. Let's see, I, I think that was the main point that I had. Uh I'm not sure about the the sound study. They did not put up barriers at this point. That's just a study. So the program installs, you know, fake or proposed barriers, and they can place sound equipment wherever they want on the site to produce the effect of the sound. So when the barriers are up, that's what produced the map that you saw on the screen. So they weren't actually in place. It's just a program to look at the effects of what would happen if we put barriers in certain locations and what effect it would have on the the sound. I believe that's all I had.
So I've, I've got a couple of questions for you. I've seen the plan and what all they provide and what all you're gonna do, and that's great. So if you're going to have the rodeo, do you, do you charge by the person or by the carload?
Uh that would be a question.
The number that we express that we want for the event is tracked via tickets. So that's how we would count on, on the tickets or the attendees. So if there's, we don't charge by the carload. It'd be, the person that would want to attend the, the event would have to purchase a ticket. And that's how we want to find who, how many people attend.
And my last comment is, you made a statement, you're not here to make money. My, my problem, my theory of this, this blueprint is, why would anybody want this much exposure for risk and and litigation if not to make money? And uh I would certainly wouldn't have had an event poking the bear a week before you came down here. I wouldn't, that just seems silly, but that's just all I got to say.
Couple of things. First, the event, um it was a private event. I understand that it still can contain some noise and it created some disruption to the neighbors uh near to the premises. As far as my understanding is, um, you know, the, the events for my family and whatnot uh do not fall under this ordinance. A lot of people, you know, yes, maybe in my, my current situation are opposed to it, but what about when somebody else wants to have a party? You know?
Good point.
Do we change the, the regulations back to serve those uh needs? The other thing that uh the gentleman asked about the AMR. They would have another ambulance, uh basically replace the one that would be on site if if anybody would to get hurt. And that has been stated by AMR.
Hey, whoa, 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 no questions from the audience going back and forth.
Sorry.
I did have one question. Can you please tell me the name of the city where you've currently been having rodeos or renting out space?
Yeah, so uh Strong City.
Strong City.
Is um one we've had uh several throughout the past years.
And the space there was called?
Uh it's just their fairgrounds.
It's just their fairgrounds? And do you know, um, you mentioned that it was a pretty large facility. Is that, is it larger than what you're currently, uh the acreage that you currently have?
I would say it's uh near the same size.
Okay.
If not a little smaller.
Okay.
Um we have also had events, you know, in other venues that we partner up with people from Texas and whatnot as well. So not all of our events have been in Kansas.
Okay. My, finally, my last question is, um have you been in contact with the high school to see if there was a way to partner with their FFA or any of their programs that they currently have?
Uh I have not, um, given that, you know, uh I, I'd like to make the effort to do that as well. As you guys know, I mean, I've got a job and everything, but uh that's, eventually, that's what I want to do. Like I expressed before in my, the previous presentation, um, you know, I want to move into the area as well. It's not shown on here, but I did basically separate uh three acres from the twenty-something acres that I do own because I want to place my house there. So eventually, you know, I will become part of the community. Uh my kids will be going to school there. So, you know, I, like, like I mentioned before, I don't want to provide something that's, you know, gonna completely, you know, impacted the community negatively because eventually, that's where my kids are gonna grow up.
And have you by chance worked with the saddle club that's already here in North Topeka?
Uh many years ago. Um, you know, we had some uh engagement as far as events, but it's been at least five, ten years.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
I have some for Joni, but not him.
All right, I think they're through with questions, and so we will close the public hearing.
I do have one more thing.
Okay.
Based off the, the, the sound study that we received, um we have began, you know, obviously, we have some of our private events for our family and stuff, and uh we have taken those into consideration. Where could, you know, like you guys mentioned, we had an event there Saturday. We, we try to do as much as we can to, you know, minimize some of the, the sound to our neighbors. Obviously, there's still some, some room for improvement, but that's why we're continuing to work with their sound engineers to, uh, you know, help that effort.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will close the public hearing. And commissioners, if you have questions for Joni or anything that you want to discuss.
Does uh North Topeka, uh, do they operate under CUP?
You're taking me back years now. So I, we've worked with North Topeka Saddle Club, and I do not recall whether or not they have a CUP on the property. My recollection is that it's grandfathered, it's grandfathered, if I remember correctly. They've been doing the rodeos there since, if I remember, like the sixties or seventies. And they've conducted them pretty well annually um since then. And so when we looked at that, when I, prior to my role as the planning director, when I was in the county councillor's office, we did look at it, and they were able to provide us documentation of the use, and they're grandfathered in, in the method that they have. So no, I don't believe they have a conditional use permit, no.
Joni?
Yes.
I've got a couple of questions. Have they, has the, the applicant provided you all the answers, the questions that you need answers for?
Well, for tonight's purpose, they've presented information on a lot, but I received it at the same time that you did right now, tonight. And so I'm not prepared to make any sort of recommendations or modifications to my proposed um solution right now. What I would say is, if you want to take it and defer, I think that's what the applicant would prefer, is that you defer action in lieu of denying it or approving it tonight. That you defer action to another night. I, well, I shouldn't say that. They would probably like it if you did approve it tonight. But um instead of a denial, they would want you to continue it to another date where they could provide us. I've not seen the sound study other than on here. We haven't gotten any final answer, answers on the traffic study. I would like them to send their information to us so we can go through and have specific conversations with them about concerns we have, and then that could be presented at a future meeting. So my answer to that, long-winded, would be, no, I'm not, I don't feel like I've got everything.
The other question that was asked was, uh, what recourse would the uh adjoining landowners have if things were starting to go awry?
Sure. So in any case, you have zoning or conditional use permits. If there's a complaint for something that's not happening properly, then they would just file a, a complaint with our office. We have a complaint form that they can fill out, or they can send an email. We do have people walk in, but we ask them usually to put those complaints in writing if they can document anything through pictures or videos so that we have that. Because I don't go to these events. I don't go see what's happening. If someone would try and reach out to the sheriff's department or any such, they're probably not gonna document too well. So do what you can to document, and then they file a report with our office after the fact, and we do an investigation and reach out to the applicant to see what we can do to rectify. Now, if it's not a violation, then we don't do anything. It just depends on what the circumstance is.
And my last question is, uh, it's four events a year. And if we do the, the, um, the applicant's, what he wants to get done, would that eliminate any of his private parties? Or family parties?
No, absolutely not. Anybody can use their property for their own use at any point in time.
Thanks.
The, you know, charitable, charitable events that they speak of, I mean, we're looking at this through the lens of a CUP specifically for a, you know, a rodeo venue. So you couldn't
No.
You couldn't use that for anything else.
No, not outside of the rodeo.
Right.
Correct. And if it's a private event with their family or friends, and that's their own use, if they're wanting to ho, host other events.
That they charge someone to come to.
They would have to come in and do another conditional use.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
Or expand. One thing that I talked with the applicant about early on is that if he started off with this four, and he questioned whether he could expand it later, and the answer to that would be, he would have to come in and file an amendment to the conditional use permit and ask to make an adjustment. You wouldn't necessarily need a new conditional use permit. You would just want to amend it to encompass additional events. I always recommend to applicants that they include everything that they can think of. However, you know, if you don't really know what may come up and how that may affect, then we have the amendment procedure, which would bring it here in front of you, in front of the planning commission. I cannot amend something on my own out of my office.
But he could use a, a, an event as one of these four to be a charitable event.
Correct.
Or tag it on.
Wouldn't have to be a rodeo.
Um, yeah.
No, but I'm saying if he decided to do a donation to a charitable, charitable event as part of the rodeo.
Correct. Yep.
Yeah, it would have, it would have, sure. It would still have to be a rodeo, one of the four events. Yeah.
Yep.
Joni, is there any way that we could dictate in the use a time in which, earlier, like ten o'clock, that, that the sound could be?
Absolutely. So as a part of any approval, you as the commissioners have every right to set conditions. Typically, what you see from me is when I recommend approval, I write in a bunch of conditions that I've thought of about, you know, the number of events, how late they go, what the decibels need to stay at, um and we, we put those all as conditions. I didn't do that because I didn't have any information to present. And so absolutely, and then even on the fly, as you're saying, I would like to make a motion to approve, and here are the conditions. If you've written them out and you can state them out loud, and we can include them, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
One question I do have, and I don't know, it may be for him, so this may not be the right time. But when, when he said that the attendance would be the ticketed people that would be going into the event at four hundred, does that mean that the four hundred are in the event and there could be a hundred people outside of the event?
Good question.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay. I'm just wondering, because I heard that, and so then it just made me concerned that there would be four hundred people inside the event, and there could be two hundred people partying in the parking lot that don't have a ticket. So I'm, so maybe you can answer that later.
Uh you can ask him that now. I think that's, yeah, I think that that's reasonable to ask that question right now.
So what, where we normally, you know, try to get ticket counts and head count is basically where the security's come, where they come into security checkpoint is. That's where we kind of, where we determine, you know, if we can come in and we can't. We'd be happy to make that accommodation that, you know, if you don't have a ticket at that point, then you need to basically turn around.
So your tickets are like online? So your tickets are like online prior to or something like that?
Yeah. So what we have done in the past is either we offer them online or to local vendors, like let's just say at an example, if we're still down the road, they have our tickets to sell.
Okay. Thank you.
One more comment. In Shawnee County, Joni, there's only the, like, to speak around the club, then the one up north here is already there. So it's not like there's a lot of them. And if you're going to make this, if you're going to make a living of it, make this work for you, you've got to figure out a way to have enough events to cash flow this baby. That's my only concern, because you need to be able to make a living.
I guess I think if it's, from what him and his sister have stated is that it's not necessarily, it's more of a family event or a family reason and not necessarily a money-making reason that they're wanting to do this type of event. I don't know. I'm not, I don't own horses. I don't pretend to own horses. But it's more about the education and the family atmosphere than it is about the making money portion to what I understand. So I think it's just up to us what we are going to vote on, whether to put it forward or not. So my concern is not whether you make money. My concern is really the noise and how it affects your neighbors. But I think that the heart and soul of what you want to do is there and I can tell you're passionate about it. So I appreciate that aspect.
I mean, it feels like where we sit tonight, I mean, I'm in no way ready to vote a yes on this. If we voted a no and sent this to the Board of County Commissioners, it's more than likely probably coming back because there's going to be additional information.
It could be. So if you vote no to deny it today, it does go to the Board of County Commissioners in October and then the BCC has the option of saying no at their meeting or they could defer action and send it back to you. But if they do that, they typically give you specific instructions about what they want you to consider. Your, so your options tonight would be to approve it with conditions, to deny it, and then the third option would be to defer it to another meeting. And if you do that, I would like to follow our normal scheduling procedure whereby they have to submit everything prior to or on the day of the deadline for a future meeting so that I know that I have it in advance and I can study it and I can send it out to the reviewing entities. So for instance, in September, we have a deadline that would put the meeting in November. In October, we have a deadline that would put it in December. So instead of having just a vague date out there with hopes that they'll hopefully get us the stuff, I want to have a date certain. And if they don't have it by that date, then they have to meet the next date. And that ensures that we get notice to everybody properly. Because, you know, we spend a lot of time and money getting the notice out to people to make sure that they have the ability to show up at these meetings.
But he could still do, this is what gets me on this permit. He can still do everything he's doing now.
Yes, this has nothing to do with what he's doing now. It's just for the rodeo or other, the rodeo events. He can still use it for a private event.
He can still have a private rodeo.
If he just invites family, he could have some sort of event there. Yeah. Well, not even just family, but it's his own, family and friends. Yeah. Uh, no, not without a specific question. Yeah.
So commissioners, what is your thought? Since we still have information that we could get? More details?
I make a motion that'll be kind of punt and let him reschedule and try to get the information back for this, the commission and zoning. And basically, he can do everything he's doing now without us even being here. So it's better than saying yes or no. That's it. He can either second it or come up another avenue.
So your motion is to continue it?
Yep.
I would, I would second that. I am certainly sympathetic to what you have brought us and for what you're trying to do on that property. I have tremendous concerns about the noise and I live in an area where I wish there was a conditional permit on riding motorcycles around, roundabout. And so at two o'clock in the morning, I get, I get even louder than a bass. But still, these are folks who have bought their property prior to your desire to put a facility there and I think we need to be very respectful to that. So when we come back, I will certainly write out some conditions that I would think would be important. But yes, I would second the motion to defer.
All right. Ken moved to continue. Terry seconded. Want to call the roll?
Gillette Johnson?
Yes.
Josh Green, Tyler Timber, Ken Corbett?
Yes.
Rosa Cavassos?
Yes.
Chad Gerhart?
Yes.
Terry Robinson?
Yes.
With a unanimous vote and approval, the item will be deferred. Continue?
Yeah, either one.
To a future date.
To a future date. And so the applicant will just need to get us information prior to a deadline. And I can ensure that Josh has those for future. So it'll come up on a future agenda. And new notice will be sent to everybody once we know when that's going to be.
Will they also receive the new, yes?
We post, so we've started with new practice and posting the entire packet on our website. So if you go to planning@snco.us, no, that's our email address, snco.us backslash planning is our website. We try and post them up at the banner so that they can be readily available and have that.
Thank you.
So the deadline you might reiterate that?
The schedule, the schedule I don't send out. It will just, once we have the information, so say for instance, our next deadline to get to the November meeting would be September twenty-seven. It's only a couple of weeks away, so I don't know that he'll get it to us by then if the consultants and everything can get us everything. If not, then October twenty-fifth is the next deadline. And so it would definitely put it out, but we would have date certens and have all the information.
All right. Is there any planning-related issues that we need to discuss?
I do want to have a discussion about our November meeting date. We've had nothing filed, so I do not anticipate an October meeting. But we will most likely need to have a November meeting. Again, the deadline for them, for them is September twenty-seventh, so we don't know for sure. But we would potentially have this case. We potentially have the Robert Palmer case coming back. We've had a couple of other topics come up that could be filed before then. November, however, is, has a holiday that falls on our meeting night. So our meeting would normally fall on Monday, November eleven, and that's a holiday, so we won't have it then. So it typically reverts over to Tuesday, November twelve. However, I had anticipated being out of the office that week and so I would like to set a special date. If you guys have your calendars and could consider meeting on a different date, like November four, I would recommend November five since that's election day. We could do the week after and do it on November eighteen as well, if we want to stick to a Monday. So November four or November eighteen, if those work for either of you or all of you, to set a special meeting.
You want to know that now?
Yes.
The fourth is fine by me.
Hold on. You're saying November fourth?
November fourth, or if we want to push it off to the following week, then November eighteenth.
Neither of those dates work for me.
Neither of them do? Okay. Anytime during the week of November four work for you?
I will be in Spain.
What about everybody else? Is anybody else available November four?
I think later you go on the month tighter it gets for.
It is going to be, I prefer to do it the week before, the November fourth, because if I'm out, then it also means I'm not preparing for a meeting, which really cramps Thanksgiving, plus then we've got Thanksgiving and Christmas. So if we could do any other day on the week of November four or if Rosa just can't be here, then we just need to have at least four of you.
Hopefully the rest of the group.
November four?
I can do November fourth, yeah, fourth.
It's fine.
Okay. So then we would set our November meeting for November fourth. You can livestream it, Rosa, from Spain.
I can Zoom.
Yeah.
Need to carry luggage?
Is there any other business to be brought? If not, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.